Okay, it's a little after six o'clock, I guess, and we're ready to open our public hearing. We'd like to call everything to order, and we're going to discuss the request to rezone property located 501 South Grand Street from R1 to commercial. Owner, Southwest Baptist University. Does anyone have anything to say about that?
Well, staff wouldn't share their part until we get to the regular meeting.
Okay, okay.
This is for the public, who is either in opposition to or in favor of. This is their chance.
And you don't think we're part of the public?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead, Charlie.
No, I'll save myself here.
Okay. Then we will close the hearing and go to the public meeting. We'd like to call that to order, and we need to do a roll call. I think everybody is here, except Richard and Dr. Birds.
Do we have someone? Just making sure we have minutes.
I guess we need to talk about what's on the agenda here. So does anybody on the board here have anything to say about the request?
Yeah, I don't know if we're gonna get a recommendation from staff or not, but Jared, are you gonna make a recommendation or not?
Uh, yes, I will be.
I don't know if you want to go first or us.
All right, we're on here. So this is, we're talking about Southwest Baptist University, that on Grand Street. Yeah, there we go, there's the map. It's a seven acre parcel, and the request is for it to be zoned commercial. Currently, we have some holes in our zoning map where things hadn't been zoned before. North of there is a treatment center. It was never zoned commercial. It's still zoned residential. There's some issues with that, like we've talked about in the past, and we're gonna, as another agenda item about the map, we're gonna talk about here in a little while. But if I'm not mistaken, and Mr. Crowder's here, can probably explain better than I can, about the purpose in the request beyond just continuing the use like it has been and the zoning that it's been. My recommendation is going to be to accept the request for the rezoning to commercial, especially with the intention of looking at zoning maps and doing some adjustments to the map in the different zones in the coming, well, the near future, anyway. But like I said, I understand we have a representative from SBU that can probably explain the request better than I can.
Why would we want to zone it commercial when we can go, looks to me like it should be rezoned conditional use R1?
Um...
If you're gonna rezone.
If we did conditional use under R1, we wouldn't need to rezone. It would just be a conditional use. But if I understand correctly, this was gonna, there would be some offices, there would be some offices in this building that would be not related to SBU's primary, or what's been their primary function? So they would...
That'd be covered by conditional use.
Uh, could be, I guess. That's not really listed in conditional uses for residential, but you are the planning and zoning board, so you can make recommendations to that nature, too.
What did we do with the body, with the car, with the auto detail shop? I love that.
The auto body shop, that was, or the auto detail shop, that was a conditional use as well.
I'm not, we probably need to let Mr. Crowder speak to this, but under six of, if you go to 405, .11, or .12, under six, you can have conditional use, you can have counseling or professional services, and it spells it out pretty quick. What you can have, if you used to go commercial, I mean, you can have a furniture store over there. You can have basically anything that's, and I'm not sure that's the best interest. My other question, I guess, to jump around here just a little bit, have any of the neighbors been contacted at all? I did not see this notice in the paper. I'm questioning whether it was even noticed up correctly.
Okay, it was put in the paper...
Back in January.
Yeah, and then run again after that.
Are you sure?
I believe so, and I didn't, I don't do those things.
I looked hard, I've never seen it.
I, uh, I don't, I don't do the notices in the paper. City clerk does, but I asked her about that today, make sure, or, not today, earlier in the week, to make sure that those had run, and she said, yeah, that they had rerun with new dates and times on them.
Yeah, 405 dot 125 dot six. Counseling or professional services, which do not create a noise perceptible by a person... Oh, hold up, sorry. Am I trying to read it off? Yes. Golf courses, public utilities. I guess professional, like, professional services, like, I don't know what the office, offices are for, would be the question, in my opinion.
I think, you know, I don't wanna try to run the meeting here, but I think maybe we had Mr. Crowder say what their, what their intent is.
Mr. Chairman, that's up to you to call.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Crowder, would you like to speak?
My name is Darren Crowder. I'm the vice president for regional campuses for Southwest Baptist University. Thank you all for taking this up tonight and reviewing it. I think the question is, what's the, what's the planned use? And that is, for office spaces, is kind of the, the initial kind of thought that we're looking at. I think we, we're looking at options. It's SBU's desire to keep higher education in Salem, Missouri. Like, we have no intention of leaving, but our, frankly, our enrollment's been down a little bit, and we're just trying to figure out how to, how to balance our books a little bit, and having some options to, to do some different things with that property would help us with that. So, so that's kind of why we are, we're looking at the, at the designation. But, I mean, our, our desire is, is office and clinical space, not necessarily, like, we're not looking for a furniture store, or, or dispensary, or anything like that, so... But in talking with Mr. Brown, that, his recommendation was commercial, so that's why the application was for commercial. Technically, I think, under, under your current zoning rules, R1 is not even an appropriate zoning classification for us, because we're higher education, and in your R1 classification, I think if I read it correctly, it's elementary schools and preschools. So, so we're technically, and I'm a little concerned about the special use, simply because we already do night classes and things like that, so that, that does concern me. And then, and this is probably just an uneducated question that maybe I shouldn't be asking, but somebody is, if it's our desire down the road, does that conditional use go with the property, or is it with the owner only on the property? So that would be a question that we would have.
Just to answer one question, you're about reviewed uses for residential one. It does say public schools, but it does say elementary and high school.
Okay, high schools on there.
Yeah, high schools on there, not higher education, college.
Not higher education, yes.
But it does say public or private.
Okay, yeah.
Which...
Which is up to the board to...
Yeah, you can make a call on that.
Conditional use goes with the owner.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you...
Condition, sorry.
Conditional use goes with the owner.
So I think, I think from my perspective, conditional use would be a concern for us, because it does, it, if we move to a direction that selling the property, but still remaining in Salem, in the property as part of the sale, is an option for us, that ties our hands with what we can do with that property, so...
I just have a big concern going commercial. I mean, if you go commercial, you sell the property, you retain the property, you know, if you're the owner there, somebody comes along and says, I'm just pulling something out of the air, I don't think will happen, because I want, you got seven acres there, I don't want to put a big piece of ours sitting right over here. I don't think there's anything we can do to prevent it, if we have to rezone commercial.
Or log landing.
A log landing, I mean, it's...
A what?
A what? A log landing.
Like for logging? Like where they stay, I don't know...
Absolutely, a buying yard for white, for white oak state roads.
So I can, I can answer a little bit of those questions. Right now, commercial, as far as it's defined in the, in the city, and what's allowed there are pretty well shops, businesses, downtown sorts of things. Anything more, I don't know the word I'm looking for.
Manufacturing.
Yeah. Log landings and things like that would be more industrial manufacturing, according to what we have in our code right now. As far as the counseling professional services, these things that are, that are generally listed out here as conditional uses in residential districts, and this is just my interpretation of, of this, was, I believe that to be more of a, well, and it does say within a residence. Well, it doesn't say within a residence on this one, it says, talk about noise perceptible, perceptible by a person of normal sensibilities within a residence adjoining the counseling and professional services. I was, I was looking at counseling professional services to mean more of a, an in-home type of business. Where you might have a counseling...
Yeah, offices.
Office inside your, in your house, or whatever.
I think there's conditional uses that you might be able to, like, argue, because there's truck, truck trailer parks and stuff like that, and the conditional uses, but those would still come before us, before actually turning that lot into that.
And I think the difference here is, we're talking about a, a commercial building, essentially, where we're gonna put office spaces into, which would be different, in my opinion, than, than a private home type business. And again, that's, that's my interpretation of it, so that's why we're here. That's why we have a board, I guess.
I think it's way too broad to zone it commercially. That's just my personal opinion. I think you can have, I mean, none of the neighbors, zero to my knowledge, kind of checked this out, none of the neighbors have been contacted. Question whether you noticed this up correctly or not, but maybe it has been, I certainly haven't seen it. I saw the 128 notes, that's the only notes I've seen. I think we're asking for something that we don't want.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment? Another comment I'd just like to make, the whole area's R1, but the treatment plant to the south, and then what hopefully returns, the recycling center to the north, are clearly not R1 uses. So, so that strip there, I think we, that's why we feel like commercial use, because it kind of fits the, the property that's there already, so...
The whole area was kind of, initially, and I don't mean to go, like, too far into the past, but that was railroad.
Yeah, it was railroad depot.
It was a railroad area, and that was a tie yard way back in the day.
Yeah.
Then you have the industrial sites of, you know, the Shelter Workshop, you have Cahills next to that jet, and then you have the bank, which you start hitting the highway. That's gonna be, but like, that strip there, at least on the, on the eastern side, is somewhat, you know, it, it wouldn't be spot zoning by any means. I understand where you're coming from, where it's like a neighborhood, you have commercial zone in the neighborhood, and then like, okay, if he sells it off, and it becomes a car dealership, and they put in a big lot or something like that. But I, I still don't see, you know, like Cahills is right there, that you have industrial right next to it, right next to houses.
The car detail shop was a big deal, just across the street from it.
Yeah.
We spent a long time talking about the size of signs, and how many cars could be parked there.
Yeah.
And on the east and west, on the east and west side is residential.
Yeah, and it, we spent some time, and I was a little bit on the, the person that was kind of bringing up a bunch of stuff about that, because there were places there that were, because we had two come into us at once. You know, we were talking about, oh, if we allow a detail shop, but then we had the motorcycle detail shop the next, what, two months later, that we denied, or we initially denied, and then he eventually got it. I, I don't know, in my opinion, I think that, and we're kind of going through, I think, I'm jumping the gun a little bit, but we're also looking at different zoning policies and the MRPC zoning here in a little bit, if you look at the, at the agenda. I think there's enough space there now, and the way it's been used so far seems to not have been a problem. And in my, like, my own personal opinion would be to go ahead with it. And I would, I would so move. I, I move to approve the change of zoning from residential one to commercial of 501 South Grand. Is it South Grand?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a second on that motion? I guess we don't have a second on that motion.
So motion dies for lack of a second.
Yeah.
So it's up to the board, if you guys want to take another action.
I would have no problem granting a conditional use, but I will not vote for being zoned commercial at this point. Now, let me add a caveat to that. After, I will be generous and say three years, I think it's been more like five years, we finally come up with a proposed working on some zoning that we actually can work with. It may all change, you know, if we can get our act together and add, and get some planning and zoning, or get some zoning that actually is meaningful, which we've been asking for for at least three years, I think five.
Yeah, I understand.
This may be a moot point. It may, it may always zone commercial down through there. And if it is, I can live with it.
And we won't know until we come up with new definitions for the zones that you all are prepared for.
That's correct.
And in my opinion, right now, to say that all of it is higher education without having offices, you're gonna have teachers with offices and everything else in there already. It may not be a commercialized office, you know, they're gonna sell portions of it, but to say that there's not offices, and it hasn't been a problem so far, I don't, I just don't see the issue with that becoming a commercial zone either. Because, like I said, you've got industrial across the street, and you've had commercial business down, down the way, and that whole strip is kind of running through town towards, what is it, Aptiger Pride Drive, but...
Third Street.
Third Street there. You know, and then even on Third Street, you have the public utilities off of Third Street. So I, I don't know, that's, that's my thought.
A quick interjection. So I did check with our city clerk, and this meeting was noticed in the February 18th paper.
Thank you.
If, I don't know if it helps or not, I do have what is permitted in a commercial zone, if you guys wanted to look over that.
Yeah.
I got a couple of copies of that. That's section 405, 260.
Yeah, I've got it.
Just if there were any concerns about what opening up that commercial door might do.
Well, I mean, you know, there's a list, it starts out, you know, antique shop, apparel shop, appliance shop, artist supplies, automobile parking lot, bakery, grace, you know, bank, barber shop, beauty shop, and then the rest is quite extensive, what's allowed there. In fact, it goes over, it's a full page on the, on the second one, looking at 405, .260.
Yeah, what most of these type of businesses have in common is their, their storefronts, office type, retail or, or office type settings.
Greenhouse probably is not, commercial greenhouse is allowed.
That one was an odd one, but I don't, I don't know why that was in there.
Miniature golf range, newspaper magazine shops. I mean...
Notions? I don't know what notions is.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, I just, I don't feel comfortable opening it up until we, we get our act together and decide if that's gonna be a commercial zone, so be it. Open it up and let them have after. But you haven't noticed any of the neighbors up, so none of the neighbors have been noticed that, you know, potentially we've got a big change coming here, and it's gonna affect the value of your house, and it's probably not even gonna increase the value of your house.
So I don't know, I'm not aware that there's a requirement in our code to notify anybody individually, but run the...
Right here on your paper.
There's a, there is a place to fill that out, but again, as far as the, the notice requirements in our code, I don't believe...
Why would we put it there if it wasn't required?
That part I don't know, unless it's just, this, this application way predates me. I didn't know if that was for, for more information for the board, just to have an idea about what was around them. But as far as the notice requirements in our code, it was just the newspaper.
Personally, I think it's gonna be a moot point, because I do think we're gonna do some changes there, and if you look at the map, MRPC's, you know, recommendations, it already denotes that as a neighborhood business district, which I think we're, we have to come up with yet, and I, you got more on that later. But I think that, you know, we're gonna be arguing over something that's gonna change here anyways, within probably, you know, two or three years. But I don't, I don't think you're gonna get an automobile retailer or anything like that situated in that zone in three years, you know.
Can I speak to that?
I'm glad, it's not my meeting, I'm sorry.
Is that all right if I speak to that, say? I mean, that, that, as representatives of the owners, that's a concern to us. I mean, I think, I mean, just, we're trying our best to stay in the Salem community and provide higher education. We're a private Christian institution, we run off tuition. And so honestly, maintaining and keeping that property is, is a large expense of our stuff. And so one of our future plans, hopefully, to stay in this community, may be, require us to, to, to sell that property with the condition that we keep use of that property. So a conditional use ties our hands to be able to do that, and that becomes, becomes a problem for us. And, and if the future use is probably gonna be commercial anyway, because you already have a treatment center plant, and you have the other industrial slash commercial to the north, I guess we would just request that, that you go ahead and make that change, change now. So, I mean, we, we, we want to stay in this community, but we've got to, we've got to be able to maneuver in order to make that happen.
I don't want to see them run out either, so, you know, if, if it requires that they sell off, you know, a portion of the building for office spaces, and if they can't, they end up leaving, you know, and I don't know who's gonna buy that strictly with the residential designation either. You know, right now, we're already talking about, like, how it's not really fitting within its own zoning. We don't really have a private higher education zoning classification spelled out in our zoning anyways. And so that would be my thing. I don't want to see them leave, so I, I would still recommend that we go ahead through with the, with the commercial space.
We would need a second to the motion.
I would still move.
I mean, it's up to you all. So you guys keep looking over here at us, but it's your decision.
I'm just looking this way. I guess if there's no second motion, it would fail for lack of a second.
Yeah, so the next item that we have on there, just a little, little catch-up on the, the map that we've been, we've been talking about here. MRPC came in, did a study, went through town, every street, kind of looked at how the, how the streets were, or how the, the different properties were being used, compared that to what our zoning map, it looked like...
Oh, thank you.
From 87, with the, with the updates, you know, since 87. And then put together this recommendation, some recommendations for us as far as what future zoning maybe should look like. There are some mistakes on here that need to be corrected, but they're easier to correct. They're easier, it's easier to know that we've got some mistakes, correct those, and then get a new map with everything on it. So there are added, there's, there's one added designation on this map, as far as recommendations go, that we don't have on our current map, and that is neighborhood business district. That's the blue. Like I said, right now, in commercial, what's allowed is downtown type shops and businesses, places where you would have storefronts and office fronts, right, sharing, sharing the same walls next door, down the streets. What we don't have in here are things like tire shops, places where you might have a couple of hundred cars parked out front, like a department store, things like that. I'm trying to think what else. Larger gas stations, we, we don't even talk about the gas stations in here. Lot of old type, or outdated probably type wording in our commercial. It would work for a commercial, for a down, what we've got here would, would be more of like a, what the downtown business district might look like. But then the red on the map would be more of a highway type commercial, where you, that you might see along a highway. So that's, that's the major difference, as far as designations on this map, would be the blue stuff. Yeah, we've got agricultural already, we just don't have anything designated agricultural. We have a section in the code that speaks to agricultural, and those are those bigger parcels, especially on the outskirts. Just wanted to show you kind of what the recommendations were. We're gonna have, gonna try to schedule a meeting again, and have a representative from MRPC come down and talk a little bit more on, on what their thoughts and how those recommendations might look toward, or for us, a little bit more in detail, and how the code, how our current zoning code would have to change, some of the wording and some of the definitions, in order to, to make things flow a little better.
Jared, why, and I realize this is a real pointed idea, but why is all of 10th Street commercial?
So we think that's just an error in the map, that northwest corner, northeast corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, we think that's just an error. I did want to add, though, what we're gonna ask for you all, we're looking at basically a workshop. a workshop, so not a meeting where you all would be voting on it, but where we would invite Ann, Ann Friend from MRPC back, have her facilitate a workshop with you all, and invite the Board of Aldermen, so that they are part of the conversation as well, about what those definitions should be for each of those zones. As Jared stated, our current commercial definition really fits fairly closely to the neighborhood business districts in blue, so we would need a new definition for what just commercial means in red. Okay? And so that's what we would be asking from you all. You know, look at, in your code book that we had provided previously, look at those sections that have the definitions, and then see what tweaks, what changes we need to make. The other thing that we would be discussing is, you know, obviously, we know about the red in the northeast corner that needs to be fixed, but are there other parcels or other areas where we need to recommend a change, and it be zoned differently than this draft map shows? Again, this is just a draft, so we'd be looking for all of that type of input from you all when we have this workshop. Okay, yeah, the intent tonight was not to get into deep weeds on this, but just to introduce it to you all, and give you a better understanding of what we're kind of looking for from you, so that then staff can draft from that proposed ordinances and changes.
Yeah, there needs to be some real redefinition of what qualifies in...
Right, but we will need from you all what that needs to be. I mean, we'll work on the wordsmithing of it, once we get the concepts from you all what that should be. Any other questions about that process, or do you all have your zoning books still at home, maybe?
I see several pieces, not a huge number, but I see several pieces. In fact, I have my own one of them, Dennis. You're going to run in some real resistance that you're taking it from commercial and putting it in R1.
Gotcha, and again, that's...
That will get some haffles up, including my own.
Gotcha, well, and that's part of that workshop discussion about, are there things proposed on this map that need to be changed?
Going backwards on zoning is going to be a tough order, I'm just saying, my opinion.
I don't think that's anyone's intent, it's just...
Do we have a current zoning map of what things are currently? Okay, thought so, just checking.
Not an up-to-date one. No, they did land use. They did actual use, not zoning.
Well, can we, yeah, can I get a copy of that? Like, and see what land is being used now, so we can kind of take a look?
I don't think I have one that shows actual current zoning, other than the one I made.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we have that, then we can send it out to you all.
Yeah, that'd be awesome, to see like, what it's being used as, because I know there's ones that are off.
Well, Jared said they did develop one that shows the actual current zoning.
Oh, that's cool.
All the changes since 87.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. If we could see like that, that more data is better than not for me, so...
Do you want all three, or just...
I would love all three.
Okay, I'm just worried it's going to confuse things.
I understand.
Okay.
I think I get it. I've been working with zoning for a long time, so...
So, yeah, I can send those out to everyone, if you'd like them.
That'd be awesome.
And they are, this one's labeled at the top left-hand corner, zoning recommendations. And then we've got one that'll be current zoning, and then one that's more of a land use, current land use, how things are being used currently, regardless of zoning. So I can get those out. And again, there will be some mistakes on those, but we've just...I know on the current zoning, we went through that with a pretty fine-tooth comb, and I think we got all those...that one's right, but as far as the land use one, there were some mistakes on that, that they didn't maybe quite understand what was going on with that property as they went past it. So, and again, a couple of large mistakes on this one, but we know those are mistakes.
Yeah.
Any other questions about that?
As soon as we have the nail down, we'll let you know.
That's all I got.
Do we have a motion? Do we have anything else? I think there's anything else, so we need a motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
One second.
All right, well, we adjourned.